It's time I will call the meeting of the Marshall City Council to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is required by the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone here this evening. We do have an agenda before us. I will move us to Agenda Item Number Two. Are there any changes to this agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the agenda as recommended.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Craig to approve as it has been recommended. Any discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. Agenda Item Number Three. Agenda Item Number Three is to consider the approval of amendments to the last regular council meeting that was held on March 13th, 2018. Are there any corrections to note on these minutes?
Move approval as presented.
Seconded by Craig, seconded by Jim to approve the amendments of the March 13th meeting. We'll move to a vote. Motion passes. Agenda Item Number Four. Agenda Item Number Four is a public hearing. This is a public hearing on the liquor license transfer. We'll then consider the approval of the transfer of the liquor license following the public hearing. I will call on Kyle Box, our city clerk, to conduct this public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Tonight we are looking for approval to transfer a liquor license from the previous license holder of the Ramada to the new receiver. This week, we received all of the necessary documents to move forward. Everything has been approved by city staff. Like I said, we're looking for approval from council tonight. Also, with us tonight is the Task Force General Manager CJ Whitten for the Ramada and his associate for any questions that you may have.
Is there any input from either the council or members of the audience as part of this public hearing? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by John, seconded by David. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. We'll now consider the request to transfer the unsaled intoxicating liquor license from Bingo LLC doing business at Ramada Inn to RMMN Associates LLC doing business as Ramada Inn, 1500 East College Drive, Marshall, Minnesota, effective March 28, 2018, contingent on all the requirements being met. And Kyle, as you had said in the public hearing, all the requirements have been met.
Correct.
Any questions the council has on this request?
Move to approve.
Mr. Mayor?
I'll second. Motion by Craig, seconded by John.
Actually, it was made by Steve.
I'm sorry.
No, Steve.
We sound the same.
So, what's his name, Steve? Yeah. And seconded by John. Discussion on the motion?
Is the motion, without the phrase contingent upon all requirements being met, deleted? Or has you since said all the requirements have been met?
I think that's all, you know, I think that's okay to have in the motion.
Yep.
Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. And then the third action is the request to transfer the Sunday liquor license again from the previous owner to the new operator.
I move approval of the transfer.
Second. Motion by Craig, seconded by David. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. And thank you, and we wish you well on success in moving forward.
Thank you.
You're coming.
Agenda Item Number Five. Agenda Item Number Five is a, we'll have a public hearing on the Saratoga Street Reconstruction project. And then following the public hearing, then we will consider the resolution that would go to the next step on this project. To conduct this public hearing, I will call on Glenn Olson, Director of Public Works, city engineer. So Glenn will make a brief presentation about the project. And then following that, as part of the public hearing, we will take input from either the council or the audience. And then following that, then we'll close the public hearing and go take the action. Glenn?
Thank you, Mayor and council. I'll see if this works. Or if you want to just go through. This is the Saratoga Street project. And it includes the entire reconstruction of Saratoga Street from just east of the Redwood River, west of College Drive, all the way down to Southview Drive. The project does include utility work on vacated South First Street from Saratoga Street to Marvin Schwann Drive, and A Street from Saratoga Street to Marvin Schwann Drive for various utilities in that section. I'll kind of get into that a little more as we go. There's a small portion of Greeley Street also that's being reconstructed to attach the utilities to Saratoga Street. One of the, one of the changes to the street is going to be this curb right here where it comes from the fire department area going south. It's a fairly sharp curve for a 30 mile an hour speed limit on that area. That's going to be softened somewhat to provide a better radius and better transition around that corner. It also includes a separate reconstruction of the fire department access to Saratoga Street because of the length of their vehicles. And they actually drag the back end of some of the longer equipment when they try to access the street. So we'll be doing some work right in front of the fire hall at the same time. And that will be funded by the city for the fire department. Like I said, the project does involve the replacement of water sewer, storm sewer. There is a section along Schwann's right in here that had been replaced for water some years ago when this used to be a residential neighborhood and all of the houses were taken out and water main was replaced on that section. But as far as the rest of it goes, it's water main replacement all the way down to, I'm going to say down in this area right here. From there south, it's been replaced before. It's all plastic, and that will not be replaced with water main. The proposal is, is to complete sidewalk replacements on both sides. I know that's been a concern from some along the project, but our ordinance states that it should be replaced on both sides, especially in those conditions where the, it's kind of a main thoroughfare. In this case, it's a, it's an arterial street. And what you want to have is sidewalks on both sides to accommodate pedestrian traffic without having to cross the major street. So we have, you know, a lot of people that do walk along this side of the street as well without having to cross the street and then recross back to their own neighborhood. Think I could go into any individual location, but I think I'll leave it at that. It's scheduled for this summer, starting in late spring and going until like the end of October. We have already met with major property owners along this area, as well as a public informational meeting with anyone in the neighborhood that wanted to come and, and see what was going on or give their input as well. The things that we ask at that public informational meeting are, is there anything that we're looking at that we're missing? Like, do you want your private walk-up replaced? Or do you want to have it eliminated? Do you want to widen or narrow your driveways? Understanding that that process is at your own cost. We hand out a flyer that indicates what this project area is and what the current proposed assessment process is. And we did indicate to them, if in fact that process is tweaked or changed in any way, they'll be notified of that as well. But should not increase their, the concept of special assessments, it, it may decrease that concept a little bit depending upon how we come forward with our assessments. We've met with the school district, the bus company, Schwann's, the YMCA, the fire hall, some individual property owners along here that had some concerns at the meeting. So we did meet with them individually as well. We are continuing to discuss with Schwann's the proposal of reconnecting or connecting the bike path along the northerly side of Saratoga Street with Marvin Schwann and the park. The initial plan shows that bike path going all the way to College Drive and then putting them on College Drive. We're thinking that if in fact we could work with Schwann's to bring it up this, this way, okay, through this vacated right-of-way to the park, that would take some of that congestion or uncertainty of driving bicycles along College Drive. So we are still working with them on that concept as far as specific location goes. And it does run through their kind of green space development area. So that's the outstanding items that we're still working on. If you have any questions, I'd certainly take them.
Thank you. Glenn will open up for input as part of the public hearing, first from the council. Steve?
Glenn, can you hand me one of the?
Here you go.
It's right here.
Oh.
Perfect. So explain, if you can, for myself, as well as where are we?
You're good?
Thank you. Smart, got to be smart. So explain, if you can, how you're going to smooth that curve out.
Okay. Do you want to go forward to that section of the plans? And we'll, we do have, okay, the next one? Right there. Okay, you see right in this neighborhood right here, you can see where the existing street is. And where the black lines are would be the replacement. So it's not a major change, but it, it really does soften that curb somewhat. And being it's coming out anyway, we want to, we're still well within the right-of-way. We're not squeezing one side or the other of that, of that area.
You can leave it on that slide, Sharon. The second thing that I have, I, I'm okay with that. The second thing that I've got real concerns with is fixing the fire department here. What's the estimated cost of that portion?
We don't have that yet, but we're, we are, we will have that shortly.
So here's my argument. And I would argue that we really don't need to do that. I live right down in here. So I walk by this a lot, which would bring up another issue. But I don't see a reason to do this because the argument about the back ends hitting here, fire trucks are going in and out of there at about three miles an hour. They're not going to, there's no scraping on the concrete. There's nothing in there. There's no damage. And I've, and I've looked at it. So I don't think we need to spend money to fix something that really is not broke. If there were scratches and cracks and lines in the concrete, that would be indicative of the back ends dragging. Nah, I would see that. But.
And I would take that up, we will take that up specifically with Chief Yant and the fire chief.
Yep.
They're the ones that have requested it. They're looking at replacing, I think, a major portion of the entire parking lot, even, even back in here. So this piece here was requested by the fire department, and we tried to accommodate that in the design plans. If in fact, it's not necessary, or we don't believe it needs to go forward, that portion of the project will be identified completely separately because it's not going to be a public improvement. Okay?
Third thing is this intersection right there. Okay? We have parking right here on that side. So when somebody drives up here, you can't see what's coming this way. And it takes forever. The other thing is that these crosswalks here, here's a big crosswalk. Here's a crosswalk. You cannot, I can't tell you how many times I have personally and have also witnessed, nobody's stopping. Nobody will stop there. And you're right, it is a mean thoroughfare and it's 30 miles an hour. And I would argue with the fire department, with one of the biggest employers in town there, fire department there, YMCA there, library there, school there, why are we making this 30 miles an hour?
That's the normal state speed limit, other than signed differently. Let's, let's take the school zones. If you recall, a grant has been applied for, for the installation of those, their rapid, their lighted changes and indications of your speed and posted speed. And the intent was that the school system would coordinate the, the speed reductions during the times that they needed to be. What we found in most school zones, if they're, if they're signed for 15 miles an hour, let's say, all year round, no one pays attention. So what we've got in the grant is two things. One is crosswalk designations with flashing lights and, and controlled, the, the speed limit and your speed also shown. And we've also relocated the crosswalks down to two locations that were coordinated with the school. So we are going to be, if you want to call it, chasing the pedestrians for the crossing to those major marked crosswalk areas. They will be able to hit a crosswalk button to, to indicate the crossing there. And while it's not necessary to have those there for enforcement of people in the crosswalk, it brings it to their attention so that they know someone is approaching that crosswalk or wanting to cross. We have some times where we have students and their parents, their parents picking them up at those locations. And the student is actually waiting on the sidewalk near the crosswalk or on that approach to the crosswalk and not really intending to cross. That doesn't happen very often, but we've seen that periodically. So I think the idea of having those pedestrian activated signals that bring it to your attention, there should be more compliance. Now, of course, compliance comes with enforcement sometimes too. But, and, and as far as the parking goes on this side, there really shouldn't be any parking between this street and this driveway.
There's not parking there. There's, they've actually got parking all the way here, right there. And it was marked, the city marked it.
Yeah.
And even right in front of this, there's trucks and you can't, you just can't see.
Yeah, right here, we, we did put parking all along this side of the street and eliminate parking on the other side. That was one of the council agenda items for, should we eliminate parking from both sides. And that's something you may want to at least discuss on a policy basis. But we did allow parking along the residential side of this street from here south.
On the, you may want to follow up on that, but back to the speed and pedestrian activated, advanced warning signs that, what is the schedule on the Seg Route to School grant award? And would that be coordinated at all with this project, do you think?
It would not necessarily be coordinated with this project. It's probably going to be at least a year out. I think we, we were supposed to get noticed by early summer. If in fact, we do get that, we would try to coordinate that with it. Because we, we also have major potential changes of that street. So for instance, if the school changes significantly in that neighborhood, where should they be? Where, the plan was to install them at Westside School, True Light School, and.
Parkside.
Parkside School and the middle school. And so if any of that changes, they could be relocatable to new sites. But this site has been, it'll be one of the first sites done. Westside School and this.
Steve, do you have any more?
Nothing right now.
David?
Glenn, coming back to that curve and the intended softening, I drive that every day. And I, from a driver's standpoint, that would be welcome, making it easier in, in, out of the curve, both directions. But on the other side of the coin, is there a degree of traffic calming now? And by taking, by softening that curve, do we invite the motorists, even unintentionally, to be going a little faster than would otherwise be the case? I mean, is there a trade-off there that we need to consider?
Yes, we do.
And if there is, tell me your thoughts about it.
My thoughts are, is that if you have control of the crosswalk locations, a 30 mile an hour speed shouldn't bother.
That should mitigate it.
We also have, you know, the outside of this curve is very seldom used. And when you're coming around this curve, you're, you're cheating into the inside and, and squeezing any oncoming traffic closer to the curb line.
Artificial narrowing.
Yeah.
And there's a history of accidents on that curb too.
There are.
Icy conditions.
Thank you.
John?
You know, getting back on one of our favorite subjects, sidewalks. You know, we've got, looks like about a two-block range in there where there's no sidewalk on one side. So you are proposing sidewalks by the ordinance to be put on that side.
Yes.
And we looked at, you know, where, or if we're going to have any significant interference. Looks like there's one parking lot that's, at least one or two parking lots that may be very close. And how would you think of handling that? Do we need a separation between the sidewalk and the parking lot? Or what are you, what are your thoughts there?
For, for instance, we met with the property owner here on relocating this. And you can see he's got two parking stalls located within the right-of-way on, on that area, which would be relocated to adjacent to his existing parking. So we have discussed that with this owner on both putting sidewalks along the front and the relocation of two parking spots that really shouldn't be there. And he was okay with those. We do, okay, and, and talking about this sidewalk installation, there is one tree for sure that would have to be removed and replaced. And there might be two because the other one is off the right-of-way, but the branches are significantly over the right-of-way, which would be over the sidewalk. So those are the two conditions that we have that, that would, would take some issues to address. But we would replace the trees.
Other input from the council as part of the public hearing? Are there members of the audience that wish to speak or provide input as part of the public hearing? So I ask you to come to the podium and, and then if you give your name and your address.
Gary, why isn't I'm with the Radiant Life Church? And have the sidewalk been discussed with the church? Because this is our first time hearing about a sidewalk would be on the other side of the street.
Thank you, Gary. Glenn?
Yes, we did address it at the public informational meeting. And I don't know if anyone is there representing the church or not. But that would be, that would have been the only other public time we've discussed it.
Any other input from the audience as part of the public hearing? So if, if you have questions about that, you know, the city engineer would be available to, you know, answer any questions too. So. Any other input?
I have one more thing.
Steve?
Is everybody from the public? Nobody wants to talk? Okay. From a standpoint of the sidewalks on that side, again, being a local resident, I don't live right on the boulevard that would be affected. I live a couple blocks down. But again, I'm on there an awful lot. And to be honest with you, the traffic always, the foot traffic, as well as the cycling traffic for the most part, of kids who ride on the sidewalk, which they shouldn't, are always funneling over to that other side. So I really don't know if there's an advantage with the added expense of putting a sidewalk on that side. I just don't see a major necessity. And I don't see the advantage. I understand the concept, but I'm not sure that I understand the necessity of it. Because again, everything on the other side, people are going towards the east side there. And so putting the sidewalk on the other side, I don't know if we have to do that. It's pretty easy to get across. I'd be more concerned with figuring out traffic flow between Robert Street and C Street there because that is a nightmare for traffic, for foot traffic, for people traffic and the vehicles. It's just a nightmare. Because there's three intersections right there. What people don't understand is there's an apartment complex right there off Robert and that parking lot right in the back dumps in, kind of jagged from the C Street Saratoga bump. Right there is the, is the C Street Saratoga. And then right there is a entryway. And there's often traffic there. That's a busy full apartment. They've got all sorts of cars that park there. And then you've got here, and especially at times at school, if you're here, you're waiting five, 10 minutes to get out. And then here, you have people coming out. So it almost makes sense like we did when we had previous construction here. The stops in there really made sense. It slows things down then from around the corner. You get ways that people can get in. It controls the flow right there where the school is and where the major intersection is. It just makes sense. Okay. David?
There's no question, the sidewalks, we're talking about 13 properties, eight residences, nine residences, three apartment parcels, and the Radiant Life Church. There's no question those sidewalks should have been built circa 1970 as that land was being platted and developed. It wasn't. City didn't have apparently a rigorous policy about that. But that doesn't obligate us half a century later to, to put the toothpaste back in the tube. We had a case very similar to this in scale and scope and number of properties, though the traffic patterns were different, on A Street and Redwood about two or three years ago. And precisely the same issue, redoing the utilities in the street, the west side, and this is built up even earlier, perhaps the late 40s, early 50s. Should have had the sidewalk then, didn't. Do we put it in now? And we wrestled with that and decided, for the same sorts of issues we've heard from many of you, are better off not to impose that burden. I think that's a precedent here. This is a different kind of street, but we've got some particular steps we're talking about in terms of traffic flow and management. And I, and taking my question to you, Glenn, had a lot to do with thinking about that issue. So it would be my view that, and I'm not so much concerned about the cost as the practicality and the burden on the property owners, that we can do this project, achieve our objectives, and not install those sidewalks on the west side.
Glenn, can you clarify on the east side? That would be a combination bike path, sidewalk, and wider width than it is currently? That would be a combination bike path, sidewalk and wider width than it is currently.
That's correct. The issue that we want to support is that is a major highway in town. And the more times we ask people to cross it, to just cross over, walk down, cross back to an existing sidewalk, I believe is a safety hazard. But you know, it's one of those things where we're giving you our best recommendation for both pedestrians and vehicles. Currently, we are designing street right of ways to accommodate different types of traffic, whether they be bicycles, pedestrians or cars, where it used to be primarily cars. And making those people cross over twice on that, to get to that side of the street is, was the primary reason for the recommendation.
And Glenn, I know we all appreciate that in your design considerations, the earlier factor of the pedestrian activated warning does mitigate some of those crossing concerns in my mind. Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that we struggled with this on the A Street project a couple of years ago and the city does have a policy about pedestrian friendly and part of that is, is that when we do projects, we put in sidewalks. And I know that in places that haven't had sidewalks, the residents typically don't want them. And I understand that and I respect that. But at this point in time, if we're going to continue to do this, then I think we need to take that policy out. Okay? Because now it's come up twice and we're moving to not do it twice. So we really don't have a policy at that time. So rather than wrestle with this every time, I think if we're going to continue to do this, we need to, we need to change the policy.
Other input as part of the public hearing, Jim and then John?
On sidewalks, and that's an interesting discussion because I'm one who does not like to spend money, but I'm a proponent of sidewalks. We live in the house we live in because we have sidewalks around the block. With little children, my wife would not choose any property except one that had sidewalks that the kids did not have to cross the street to ride their little bikes around the block or up and down the block. With that being the library, the school, the YMCA there, I think asking kids to crisscross the street isn't necessarily fair to have them cross the street once. I used to pick my kids up from middle school and quite honestly, that's a disaster picking up kids there. There's kids all over there crossing, running. If we had, you know, even the summer with kids, use example, we had my kids biking to the library for kid time at the library. Now they're older, so they don't do that. But we are in the neighborhood we are in because the kids could sidewalks all the way to, it was the old library at the time, not the new one, but they could ride bikes here. I am, like you Craig, we're supposed to be an outdoor community. Sidewalks connect the community. They connect the neighborhood. I think in my neighbors, we stand in our sidewalk and we chat and solve all the world's problems.
We don't get them solved. I might shit and hang out in your neighborhood for a while, but we talk about it.
So but sidewalks, you know, they are a burden in the winter, the shovel, snow, I get that. They are, you know, in your front yard, but it is a way a community connects with each other, a community connects with each other. And I'm, I think sidewalks are good for your community. I think it increases your property values. Like I said, I, our family would not look for a house if it did not have sidewalks.
I think another important issue, Jim, and I appreciate that, I think another important issue is that I know on A Street, there were at least two property owners that came and discussed their concern about the sidewalks. And there was an impression that if they didn't have sidewalk, their assessment would go down, the value of the sidewalk. And that is not the case. Okay? It's still going to the $5,500 maximum if it gets to that, whether there's sidewalks there or not. So that part of it, you know, the other piece on A Street that was compelling is there were three or four properties that we would have literally been able to walk by and clean their windows. And so there was a real encroachment on those, on those homes. And I haven't surveyed this particularly for this issue, but I don't believe it's the same. But again, I understand the concern. Had I lived where I live now and been faced with the same question, I would have probably asked to not have sidewalks. But being there now and having them, I agree, I think they really do connect the community. They connect the neighborhood. And I don't even complain about moving mine. Heck, I move about half the neighborhood between Terry Sorble and I. So you know, I personally think that they are of value to the community. I understand the people that don't want them, but my piece too is I really think they help and I think that's our policy.
We are still in the public hearing. Any other input as part of the public hearing, John?
Just one, one thing to add to the sidewalks, maybe a little nuts, but to try to be ADA compliant, or is there any possibility of an overpass that would fit into there?
Not at this, not at this time.
We got, we got a big one on 23, but this is across Saratoga. We've got a school, a library, YMCA. If there's going to be a location that's probably the most in need of something that's the safest, that would be it. I just, like you say, ask the question, you know, I know it's very expensive, but just, you know, you have more of the questions that's going to fit in.
Issue will be a major improvement if we can get going with that project. And that would be like in 19.
And last portion of this, not to do with sidewalks at all, but what's the plan for detouring traffic?
There definitely will be a detour of traffic and we talked to the school primarily and the bus company about, we were intending to do the school part first and because it's kind of the easiest to do and then go up to the other area. They did convince us that we should do it just the opposite. We'll come in and allow that portion to be operational from C Street South, they call it, to Southview and then finish up on that section. There's a opportunity that with the correct contractors, that they could come and knock it all out by early in the school season instead of end of October. We don't know who's going to get the job yet. But there will be a pre-job conference that will include all of those interested parties in giving input. And the contractor then will, at that meeting, say, this is what I intend to do with scheduling. So really the one piece will be from the bridge on west of 4th Street all the way to C Street. And then C Street will be, remain open until we get down to that part.
Other input as part of the public hearing? Anyone from the audience want to weigh in before we close the public hearing? Not, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move we close the public hearing.
Seconded by Craig, seconded by Jim to close the public hearing. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. We'll now consider the resolution that would order the improvement in preparation of the plans for the Saratoga reconstruction project. Questions about the resolution?
Go ahead.
Move the resolution.
Motion by John, sir, second?
Second.
Seconded by Craig. Discussion?
Um, I've made the statement last time, but the, I'm opposing this simply because we keep talking about our assessments. And again, we've gone two weeks, another meeting, and we've seen nothing on those assessments. And I think, like I said, even if we vote to leave them the same, we need to do something. This is, now it's dragging out into April. I think we started this a year ago, I started it. And we had discussion, we had a work session on it. So at this time, I will still oppose this because I believe we need to deal with how we're going to handle the assessments. These folks, they have an idea, like you said Glenn, they may go down, but fair to them, they should know how those assessments are going to be handled. And we as a council need to get that done.
You had just said to me.
The Ways and Means Committee will be meeting to discuss the assessment policy on April 5th and then it'll come back to the council for consideration.
Other discussion on the motion?
Mayor, question. I'm reading the language of the resolution. It doesn't directly discuss the sidewalk issue. Obviously, the project needs to go forward, but is this, can the issue of the sidewalks be deferred until later discussion or do we need to resolve that for the purposes of this action tonight?
It would be nice if you had an idea of what you wanted done because it would change the project plan sheets for that area.
Okay. Thank you for that guidance. That being the case, I'll offer an amendment. We'd have to work on the precise wording, but I assume an amendment is what we need to do here, that would specify that we would not be constructing sidewalks on those 13 parcels on the west side of Saratoga Street.
Okay, that's an amendment to the main motion, which will require a second. Is there a second to that amendment?
I would second that amendment.
So the amendment made by David, seconded by Steve.
Kyle, if you need some exact wording, I can sketch something out. You'd probably welcome that.
Kyle, are you going to put that into, or? And so we will have the vote on the amendment as a voice vote, right?
Correct. Okay. So if I'm clear on this, our vote then is, is that we're approving this, ordering the preparation for plans?
No, we will vote on the amendment.
Okay, and that's to not have sidewalks on the west side of the?
That's right. And then the, if, that will be then the, whether or not it passes or not passes, that will determine what is on the main motion. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay. So discussion on the, on the motion on the table, which is the amendment to the main motion. Any discussion or we understands the?
Amendment is to remove the sidewalks.
That's right. On that portion.
So essentially where there are sidewalks, we leave them and where there are none, there stays none.
And that is the intent of the motion and the second?
Correct.
So we'll go for a voice vote on that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So division of the House, just for the record, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand.
That's your left hand.
Those opposed? So the motion does not prevail.
Glenn, we're spending money.
So we're back then to the main resolution as not amended. Any discussion on that resolution? That will move to a vote. A motion passes. Move then to agenda number six, which is the consent agenda. We'll bring the items up on the screen on the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, consider the approval of temporary on sale liquor license for the Marshall Convention and Visitors Bureau for an event June 9 to 10, 2018. Consider the application for a temporary on sale, testicating liquor license for the Avira Marshall for an event April 21st, 2018. And the, consider the approval of the bills and the project payments. Are there any items on the consent agenda any member of the council wants removed for purposes of separate discussion?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. Agenda number 10. Agenda number 10, consider the authorization, the purchased vehicles for the police department with the tonight, Chief Rob Biant present the recommendation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Asking your authorization to purchase three vehicles with two requests. We have taken the specifications before the equipment and review committee and have recommendation. One would be for two Ford of the interceptor SUVs, four wheel drive, and that would be from Cruze. And then following one to have a second one then for an authorization for a Chevrolet Tahoe from, my recommendation would be from Lockwood Motors for that.
Any input from the equipment review committee?
Go ahead, John.
We, we looked at the Tahoe we went over, actually had two meetings on it to try to bring the costs down. We thought as an equipment review committee, there was items on the Tahoe that weren't necessarily needed. And after looking at quite a bit, we lowered the cost of the Tahoe approximately $1,000, correct?
Yes.
Without jeopardizing the use of the vehicle for what they're going to use it for. So that's, and then the Ford Explorers are, I mean, they're pretty cut and dry.
Yeah, it's pretty much a no brainer on those.
Any questions for Rob? John?
Just to be clear, the, on the Tahoe, this is a commercial one and not a police?
No, this is police package.
This is the police package.
Yes. That's one of the distinctive features because with our supervisors, predominantly the sergeants using it, it's a patrol one, so.
So it is, it is one that's set up for the police?
It's pursuit, yep.
It's pursuit, yeah.
And the other part of that question is, there was an extended warranty listed. Is that intended to be part of the purchase or, I wasn't clear on that point.
I think that was an offer in the bid.
That was an offer in the bid. It's, I think there's value in it, but that's a decision by council.
So is that, was that anything that was discussed in the?
There wasn't concern about it.
So your, your recommendation is with the extended warranty then?
Tahoe comes already with a five-year, 100,000 mile powertrain warranty, or yeah, warranty on it. So I don't think there'd be a need for it because I don't think your extended warranty's going to go much beyond that anyway.
So the recommendation wasn't with it, but?
Yeah, it was not with.
Not part of the recommendation.
That was the discussion.
All right. Any other questions?
So the Cruze bid is slightly less than the state bid?
Well, yes.
And then the Lockwood one is just slightly higher than the state bid?
Yes. Again, the only caveat's a little bit, there's, you know, the state bid supplier has a larger profit by volume. The only thing I can look at is Cruze's got two vehicles, so they have a little more margin. But my recommendation is for Cruze and Lockwood. But again, the Tahoe would be a little more, slightly more expensive from, from Lockwood.
Just on that, you know, same thing, we're talking about a 2%, roughly in the 2% area. And I know on other discussions in the past, we've never really made it a policy, but you know, for usually something in the range of under 5%, we've tried to keep it local if possible. It's not a policy, that's not a, you know, guidelines or anything like that. But in this case, I'm, that's my thinking, it's past practice. I'm more inclined to just keep it local for the, you know, roughly 2% change.
Absolutely.
Any other discussion or questions?
Well, questions, discussion, and I visited with Rob about this when we were at our equipment review, but possibly looking at the fact of, I know where these are in a three-year cycle to replace them. Now that we're getting a Ford SUV instead of the cars, to see what it would take to maybe run these four years. This vehicle costs us $10,000 a year to own, plain and simple. When it's said and done, this vehicle costs us $10,000 a year. And this is, I know you said you'll look into it because if we can keep these for four years and lower that cost to $8,000 a year, we save the taxpayers that money. They have a resale value, I was Googling on CarGurus, these things do resell at, you know, 12, $14,000. So after three years, there is a lot of life left in these vehicles. And even at most, a lot of the ones I found online, and I didn't do a lot of research, were 2014s. There are a few 15s out there, I did not find any 16s. So that's telling me that other, you know, I don't know how long they've had them, but I think it's worth looking at running these, you know, one or two of them for a couple extra, or not a couple, but one extra year, two or two, four-year cycle. A lot of them I found online, were running 110, 120,000 miles, which tells me other departments are running these things 110, 120,000 miles. It just comes down to what can we do, what's most cost effective? And these vehicles are expensive because once you buy them, they drop $20,000 in value, roll them off the lot. So if we can keep them an extra year and put our yearly costs on to $8,000 instead of $10,000, that saves our taxpayers money if the vehicle holds up and does what it's supposed to.
And holds some resale.
Right, and that would be a budget thing we talk about, but we did. And I guess my only ask would be to consider if we do go there to go with one instead of both, just to get a feel for it. Again, the part of why we're asking for the Tahoe, for the vehicle that's being kept a long time is that's a truck platform.
Yeah, and I'm not questioning the Tahoe. Yeah, and I'm not questioning the Tahoe. That one's nine years old, a hundred and forty thousand. We've used the life out of that.
Right, but what I'm saying is, the Ford is a much better vehicle, but the frame and the platforms-
Oh, yeah, no, I get, and that's why I said, the Ford is better, the Explorer's a better vehicle than the cars we used to run.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
The cars are set up on a three-year cycle. We are now basically buying a light truck.
A better platform.
Better platform, better motor, better everything, that I believe they can run an extra year and save the taxpayers money. I would like, you know, maybe purchase one new one and keep it old and see what happens, 'cause I think it'll hold up.
For next year, or no?
Um, well, we're-
Well, that wouldn't be part of tonight's motion anyway. We'll talk about that.
Okay. Again, my ask would be, as we get to budget, then it's a separate discussion, but we'd look at one.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's certainly, you know, good to discuss at that time.
Yep.
Because on this one also, we are going to budget, take these out of the budget. And I need, I see we're gonna do a budget amendment to move money from last year to this budget, so we don't bond for these. And I don't know if that, this is, was part of this motion, part of this, 'cause I think bonding five years for a vehicle we keep for three years is not being very wise. They're gone before they're even paid for. But I, we, I need some people to do a little more explaining as we get into this, how we're doing this budget amendment, moving this money around, you know, where that is all coming from. I've been visiting Carla and sharing about that some today, and I want that explained.
Councilman Lozinski, the unaudited 2017 final budget numbers indicate that the Police Department expenditures were under budget. So I think that even though we don't earmark under expended budgets for specific departments, they don't get to keep the money 'cause it's the people's money and goes into the fund balance, in that particular department there was an underspending of the budget. So we're not sure if we need to take it from the fund balance. I, my thought is, is that let's see how 2018 goes for law enforcement budget, and it's likely that there's room in the existing 2018 budget for this expenditure, 'cause I'm hoping that twenty seven, or 2018 will be like 2017, and we underspend the Police Department budget. A budget is a guess, and we do our best at trying to forecast what the expenses will be. Something catastrophic happens, or there's pressures on, on our Police Department, you know, things may not turn out to be what we predicted in, as far as expenditures in the Police Department budget. But it's likely or possible that we could expend these funds out of the 2018 budget.
So the short answer is, is this would come out of Rob's budget this year, and these would not be bonded, correct?
Our intention, when we discussed the levy last December, and one of the discussions was differences between five percent, three-point-eight and three-point-two, is that the additional levy dollars would help reduce our need to bond. And this would be an example where we would not bond for these vehicles, it would be in the budget and levied.
And then the final question that would be, so if this, obviously, Rob has absorbed a large amount into his budget to purchase these, which, which I think is good. I mean, I would support purchasing them through the budget and not bonding for them. If he runs short, we may have to do a budget amendment come October to maybe cover, November, a shortfall in his budget for that. Correct?
One of the things that we haven't still kind of worked through are, when our budget amendments needed, what's past practice or policy. I'm not, my experience has been that you don't have to do budget amendments per line or per department. So I'd need to do a little more investigation background with Carla and our auditor, and have further discussion on that. One of the things that's, that's not in the 2018 budget is, and this has been past practice previous to Carla, is that equipment was not a budgeted expenditure, it was a known planned expenditure, but it wasn't put in a line item. Instead, it was put in a capital, it was put in a capital budget, or, or planned to put there. And then once it was expended, then they did budget amendments. Going forward, what we would do, this would be 2019, is we would put these in the budget, and that way we don't have to do budget amendments later on. Again, the council would have to be in agreement with that. They would still come to the council for action approval, but it, but it puts a plan forth that's more realistic than going backwards and saying, let's change this. So that's how we would want to do it. But further discussion on, on whether or not the budget amendments would be needed. I'm not, my experience is familiar that we, we wouldn't need to do that.
And that's on the Ways and Means Agenda to discuss also.
We had some discussion about it last night, and I don't think we came to a resolution on that. It was more just a general topic on our CIP. But we meet again on April fifth. In addition to special assessments, we'll talk about CIP and, and budgeting and equipment.
Other, Steve?
So I think that there's no question that the supervisor vehicle needs to be replaced, given the mileage and the years on it. And like Councilman Lozinski said, we've used that one. I'm not so sure about the other two, because I don't think we've run our city vehicles enough. And after going to the town hall meetings, I think it's time that we start putting it to the fire and getting our use out of these things when we spend the money on them. So I would actually make a motion to approve a purchase of the supervisor vehicle, and we'll discuss the other ones separately.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Jim. Discussion on that motion? Kyle, I'll give you a second to insert that motion. Allow any other discussion on the motion?
I'll just ask, do we have any Chevys left, or they're all Fords now?
They're all Fords.
They're all Fords.
Tahoe.
Motion would be purchase of the Chevrolet Tahoe with the police package from Lockwood Motors for thirty-seven thousand, seven-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars.
And the setup allocation approximately seven thousand dollars.
With the rest of that sentence?
The, the vehicles we're replacing are Chevys or Fords?
It's a Chevy.
They're Chevys, yeah.
Yes.
That's what I thought. And they're not supposed to last as long as the Fords, we're assuming, right?
No, I think the question that you have is, you're asking about the two that, that they-
That are being replaced, yeah.
Oh, the, the two that we're replacing would be Fords, and we'd be replacing them with Fords.
And, and they're this interceptors right now?
Yes, yes.
So, um, I don't know.
So when we get to that, that motion, yeah, that's a good question.
I'm just trying to use up the time we have.
Yeah, well, thank you for that.
I did-
Kyle will thank you for that, too. Okay, now we do have the amended motion number two. Before you ever understand that motion, which is the buy, buy the Tahoe for the supervisor vehicle. Any other discussion on that motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. Now the question of the replacement of the two Ford interceptors.
So it's replacing another, two other Fords?
Yes.
And so you, you could start the, the extra year now, or you can start the extra year later?
Either one, I guess.
If only one is purchased, does the bid stand?
Yes.
Or was the bid for two?
I believe so. I believe it would.
And that's what I was, you know, look at, is maybe purchase one now, because it isn't unknown.
And do the one year, do the four year on one of the two that we're replacing and-
It'll be easier on Rob's budget, since we're budgeting these two. It'll be easier on your budget, so we had seventy thousand dollar surplus last year, which we slide into this year, however we order it. Would be easier on our budget, 'cause I do not, and I, and if you talk, I don't think we should be bonding for these, we're not bonding for them. It, it'll make it easier on Rob's budget the next year going forward. We can see how that works out, and perhaps just replace the one that's four years old next year.
And there seems to be traction for that motion, so I would entertain a motion.
I'll entertain that motion. We purchase one Explorer.
I'll second it.
Interceptor.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Craig for the purchase of one Ford police interceptor with the all-wheel drive from Cruise Motors with the setup allocation for that one vehicle.
And just for reference, just for reference, Rob, if we're taking this step, which of the current patrol units would be designated as surplus?
I'm not sure.
To be, at, at the department's discretion?
Yes, it would, uh, it'd be the, whichever one, either, I'll check with my patrol sergeants, whichever one has the highest mileage is the first thing. If we're seeing one that has worse maintenance-
Other considerations, okay.
Those would be the two things we'd look at.
Thank you.
It'll be one of the two that I noted in the memo.
Were they both placed in service on the same date?
Uh-
You can check on that, too.
Yes, we'll look at that. 'Cause we have had, when we had the Chevys, we got them intermittently because they were slow in delivery. So sometimes we'd get the previous year shortly before the next year, because sometimes they'd come quickly and sometimes they shouldn't, or it came later. That was a, another challenge with John D'Amplis.
Yeah, he just mentioned something else, Rob, that I don't believe we've seen for a while. And we used to see the maintenance expenses and things on the Chevys.
Yeah.
And those were nasty. They really did not last, so that's why we ended up going to the, the Fords.
Sure.
And actually, it'd be nice to see, just a report on these and just what the maintenance is. Kind of, I know the, the three-year, four-year that you're talking about, I'd like the idea of the four-year, too, but I don't want to do it on more than one, because just the past experience we've had with some of the Chevys, you have it down for a couple of weeks because transmission finally gave out, or whatever. Yeah, you can't afford to do that either with having two of them out there, that potential-
We can put that together and put it in a bi-weekly report.
Yeah, or, yeah, I don't care if it's bi-weekly, or if it's every six months, but I mean, I like the idea of seeing that maintenance cost.
It's a little bit of, it's not like we have a computer system that tracks all those exact costs. It's, again, one of my sergeants getting costs, and it's really an approximation, but it is a guide.
Yeah, and mostly I'm looking at, you know, the, the major stuff. I mean, when we had, I don't think we've had transmissions and things like that to worry about like we did before, so.
No, since we turned over the more frequent turnover, it was pretty much every Impala got a new transmission before it got sold.
Some cases, too.
Some cases, too.
The motion before you is-
Thank you.
For the purchase of one Ford police interceptor SUV with all-wheel drive from Cruise Motor for twenty-eight thousand, nine-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars with a setup allocation of approximately five thousand dollars, and declaration of one current patrol unit as a surplus vehicle once replacement is purchased and in service. Any discussion on that motion?
Just one quick question here. Do all the vehicles pretty much get the same miles per year, or some use more than others, or?
Um, the general patrol, basically, when we had the corporals in the mix, theirs was lower, but now we have that as one that we're gonna be keeping longer. The one that gets less use is the one used by the school resource officer. She partners with another, all the cars are primaried by two officers. So the one, again, it isn't just a school resource officer vehicle, she shares it with another officer. But just with the nature of her job, she's not out, nor, except during the summer months, she's not out on patrol. So that one vehicle tends to be a little lower. But again, it's, just keeping the flow, we've, we've turned it over. But all the rest usually are fairly, fairly similar.
I, I just wondered if the older vehicle you could use less, you know, the person who drives fewer miles could be using that vehicle and, and extend it more that way.
We get a little, the, less- Teen-year officers aren't assigned a vehicle, so they can grab, potentially a different vehicle. But again, in some ways, that would be throwing off your comparison if we drove one differently than the others. So I guess it'd be my intent, if we got two, that we drive them like normal, and then be able to present to you a actual side-by-side comparison. Again, we used to do that with the Impalas, just because, just trying to make them get through three years. But I don't think this way I'd have a more accurate basis for their reliability if they go the four years, if we treat them as we would normally treat them in the course of four years.
Oh, and you want to set up a spreadsheet. I mean, we're doing two vehicles now, but one is the supervisor vehicle. You get one of the regular ones in the regular rotation. If you do two, next year you may be back in the same rotation that you were in.
Well, we'll, yeah, we'll-
You're gonna need to map this out.
We might, I mean, and that's the thing, we have five, what I call, support vehicles now, the ones that we don't buy, that isn't a patrol unit. And so that's not every year, but it's most years out of, out of, 'cause, out of our cycle. So again, there's five times we'd be coming, asking for a secondary vehicle. Again, I call it a support vehicle, but they're patrolled, too, but it's, it's not driven by a patrol officer, not as much out on routine patrol.
Mr. Mayor, the one, the one thing that I think we need to do with these vehicles, and I, the Equipment Committee can tell me, are these things decked out with all the modern safety features and the remote controls and all that kind of good stuff? Yes? So again, I think it's important that we start driving modernly and utilizing these things modernly. So going back to an issue that I had a few months ago, when I go up and see vehicles running all the time, and you told me that the officers have a certain temperature where they leave it running.
Yeah.
I'm gonna raise the BS leg on that, because I think now with modern technology, I can start my car right now out in the parking lot with my telephone. And when you're burning extra gas, that's again, city money and taxpayer money. And in the old days, it may have been warranted. There might have been some validity to it. At this point in time, they have, when I bought my new Ford, which is an all-wheel drive, kind of like this, except not the interceptor, they offered an extended remote control. I'd even be in favor of buying that or adding that if we would shut them off and we're not in them. You know, when I go up to the hospital, I see them running, and I'm at the hospital for two hours doing my rounds, and I come out, and the patrol car's still there and still running, I've got issues with that. So I think that we need to start utilizing these vehicles and treating them gently. They're police vehicles, they're gonna get used a little harder than a normal vehicle. But with modern technology and modern devices, I think that we can make some impact on fuel consumption and things like that. So I think that that's a, no matter what vehicle you get, it's time to start changing from administration's time, start teaching people how to use them correctly and get away from bad habits and going to new habits, so we save a little money.
Other discussion on the motion?
What, you asked, Steve, there is a remoteless keyless fob on this, so I'm assuming, I'd have to look or ask Stacy, but usually if you have a keyless fob, you probably have remote start.
Yeah.
So, and, and I know the new Fords, 'cause I, I have a newer Ford, they actually shut themselves off. And I don't know if that's reprogrammed, the nose, mine will shut itself off after five minutes.
The only, the only thing I'd like to add to that, and I don't know what the answer to the question is, but one of the considerations is, is that when the, the officers go on duty, there's a lot of electronics that they start in their car to support their job. And I don't know how many of those are on their own battery power, you know, like laptop computer will run for a few hours without a source coming in, but some of the other things may not. And when the officer goes on duty, they go through a whole series of booting up and, and, you know, certifying or clearing their equipment before every shift. And that's the only thing that I would say is that, at a point in time, and I know that when they go for their dinner break, they usually shut them off, so I don't know what that is, but I just want to leave that open. I don't know the answer to the question, but consider that it is not a family driver. So there are other safety requirements and work requirements, that their safety is the most important, way more important than a few gallons of gas. I agree, if they can shut them off, they should, but I don't want to get tunnel vision.
Okay. So, Rob, you had that, have that input. It's, but we still have the motion on the table for the purchase of the one vehicle. Any other discussion on that motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. Agenda Number Eleven.
Thank you.
Agenda Number Eleven, the sounds of summer, call for a public hearing for the private use of public streets and parking lots. That is the action, is the public call for the public hearing. I'd entertain that motion.
I move that we call for public hearing to be held on April tenth.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. Agenda number 12. Commission board liaison reports, mine have not met since we've asked. Craig?
Mine have not met either, Mr. Mayor.
The community services did not meet, cable commission did not meet, EDA did meet, and we talked a lot about the project that's coming in with the TIP financing and the new apartment complex, potentially very big project, and going to be, if it passes, it'll be boots on the ground fairly quickly here and with anticipated move-in dates into later this year even, so that's exciting. There was also some discussion around some other developments that are coming through. We had a long meeting, actually, because we didn't have a quorum until what time, John? About 12:30, quarter to 1:00, so we went until almost 3:00 o'clock, so it was a good meeting. That's all.
Thank you, Steve. Glenn?
My commissions have not met.
John?
Just to add to the EDA meeting, one other item we talked about was potential for some amendments to the covenants in the Parkway housing area, and we concluded that we should have at least a informational meeting with the residents out there, so. There was an MMU meeting, but unfortunately, the LNO meeting that was going on a while ahead of it landed, or ended up being a little longer, actually, than MMU meetings, so Bill said he covered for me in the meeting, so. Did we do anything, Bill?
What is your truck?
David?
Ninety-year schedule.
Convention and visitors bureau met on the 15th, mostly informational, a little bit of catching new members up to speed with the way things work with the bureau. And on the 26th, Ways and Means met. John, did you want to talk about that in your, no, okay, heard a bit about that already. That's all.
And Jim?
Well, transit did meet. You'll see there's a new look to the mat buses, and they are also looking at trying to improve some of the bus stops, some of them are just signs, so they're working on trying to get them improved. I think they're working at Glenn's office on some of these stops, too. The math, I didn't get the exact numbers, but our bus system is used quite a bit in Marshall.
Thank you, Jim. Move then to council member individual items, agenda number 13. Craig, let's start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only thing I have, well, two things. One is, I really appreciated the town hall meetings, thought the attendance and the input were good, and I appreciate staff's response to staff-type items that we brought back, individual concerns, and, you know, I just think it was very positive. The second thing is, I don't know how many of you went out to the Red Baron Arena and Expo this weekend for the Holman Garden Show, but it was, it was awesome. I got chills when I first walked in. I mean, that's, that's kind of what I hoped it would look like when we did something like that, so I think Marshall Radio did a, did a fantastic job of putting that out. I know Alex and his crew did a good job of working with the AV, and so having the video board running with the promos for the, for the people that were there was good. I talked to, I think, almost every vendor, every display that was there, and the attitude was really positive. They're actually hoping that they plan to do a fall one, too. They said that, every one of my talkers said they will definitely be back. They were really excited and happy with how that went, and so I want to say that the 13th, 14th, and 15th of April is the camping and RV show out there, so I hope people put that on their calendar, too, so kudos. And then I was also corrected, the number, the perceived, believed number through the door is more like 89,000. I think I said it was 82,000 at the, at the town hall, it was closer to 89,000 heads through the doors, so it was a pretty good turnout for Red Baron Arena. Thank you.
Greg?
Steve? Similar, my two things, the town hall meetings were just fantastic, and I guess one of the things that I learned in the town hall meetings is that the people really liked them, and we should probably look at having more of them. Number two, and I'm going to look right at the camera wherever it's looking, Alex, but apparently, they look, they look at us on TV, and there's a lot more people watching on TV than there is here, so.
That's kind of sad, isn't it?
I think we should all get makeup artists, really, because it'll make us, well, it'll make you guys look a little better, I'm already.
I use them, you can't don't.
Yeah, no. The second thing was on the same venue as Councilmember Schaefer, that home show was just fantastic. The one complaint that I had from a constituent, absolutely, the parking. And so when we look at out there and people are talking about putting hotels out there, we got to get the parking situated because the people out there that talked, a couple of them came up, they're a little older, it's hard for them, they have handicap stickers, they had to walk three-quarters of a mile to even find any parking, so we really have to look at the parking because if we can make these venues as big as they can be, because that, that's the way a convention should be, is that.
Otherwise, we're going to have to set up bus service.
Yeah, I mean, we can do that.
Steve? Glenn?
I have nothing.
Jim?
Again, our town, Craig, and our town hall was very good. I would like to thank Dennis Simpson, because I believe he was at all three of them taking notes, so we do not forget what was said. I also want to thank Kathy Lee, because she was at all three of them taking notes.
She set them up, she worked hard.
She did, and I want to thank them, and it was a good success. I want to thank Deb for switching sides at our town hall, so she got my good side and she took a picture.
Like I said, you got to mark that.
Other than that, I have nothing.
David?
Ditto's all around on both the, the town hall meeting and the Holman Garden Show. I was thinking about the parking issue. This is a budget issue, it means spending money, so, and doing things out of order, but are there things we could yet do this year to, I don't know if, if the bus shuttle for big events is the answer, or something that buys us a little bit of relief or a little bit of mitigation of the problems that we have with large events with the parking setup? I think that's worth at least some consideration, short-term, as opposed to longer-term scenarios that we're hoping for, too.
And I want to make a comment on that, but it gets to my point.
And also, March 14th, went to St. Paul for the Greater Minnesota Cities Lobby Day to visit with legislators in the region about transportation, LGA, and other Greater Minnesota issues, and Mayor Burns was there for some of those visits as well, so it was a good session.
Thank you, David. John?
Well, talk about the town hall meetings first. Mentioned there's a lot of good that was in there, however, I did bring up in the, the town hall that I do see, there was one bad side of that, and that was that I really think we need to have a meeting where all of us are that there with the staff, because there's a lot of question, even some of the stuff that I've heard, you know, see, you know, we don't all know everything that goes on in all areas, and I like the idea of having everybody there, even though, yes, it could be at times a little intimidating, but I think if we do another, or had another one of the smaller ones, or just did a larger one and then a small one, something to that effect, we'd probably get people past that point, but the fact that, you know, we do, we don't work in a vacuum, and we do need the information, and yes, kudos to Kathy Lee and Dennis, but also Carla. You know, Glenn and I had the advantage of being at the, the tail end of the town hall meeting, so there was a lot of questions back and forth to Carla and even some that she responded to late at night, so thank you for all the information that you gave. One other item, you know, actually, it's nice to hear, we got a parking issue at Red Baron. It's, yes, we knew that before, but it's nice to hear we have a parking issue. It's so busy out there, we need to talk about parking lots. That's a good, that's a good thing, so. Oh, one other item regarding, you know, the people that are watching now, Dr. Raffalter, who was also at all three of the meetings, I believe, I think you made it to all three, kind of told everybody, hey, come to a meeting instead of just watching it on TV. If you want to bring something up, you want to find out what's going on, it's easier and better at the meetings, so thanks, Doc, for that information, so.
Thank you, John. So three quick things. One, one is the, in follow-up to the parking discussion at the Red Baron Arena, I think we're close to the point of closing out of the construction account and knowing where we're at, and I think we've had the preliminary information that we're significantly under budget there, so David, to your point, there may be an opportunity for, you know, doing some, at least temporary corrective action, you know, to address the short-term before the longer-term development happens there, which we assume that, that will be happening. Second thing I would say is, of course, the activity at the arena this weekend was talked about quite a bit, but, which is really, it was gratifying to see, especially in light of the weather that we had, and the, because that was a significant snow that our crews needed to deal with on Saturday, probably spent 12 to 14 hours dealing with that, because again, it was almost a carbon copy repeat of what happened two weeks prior, you know, with the 10 inches of wet, heavy snow that's difficult to move, and Glenn may pass along our appreciation for the staff that worked really through the weekend on, on addressing that. Then the third and final thing I'd say is, this afternoon, there's, I think you're all familiar with Gold College and Southwest Minnesota State University, so I was a presenter at Gold College, and along with me was the mayors of Wilmer, Marv Calvin, and the mayor of Worthington, Mike Cooley, and really, our topic was on leadership and partnership and kind of how our regional communities work together, because as we talk about regional communities, whether it's Marshall or Wilmer or Worthington, we're really all dealing with, with many of the same issues, and we're, you know, the success of Marshall and the success of Wilmer and the success of Worthington is really vital to the ongoing success of the entire region, so it was really a good discussion between those other two mayors, and certainly, there's lots of common issue, whether it has to do with healthcare, or whether it has to do with diversity in our community, or population demographics, or transportation issues, or, you know, public decorum at meetings, or a wide range of topics, so it was really a good, good session. With that, we'll move then to agenda number 14, which is a staff report, so we'll start with City Administrator Sharon Hanson.
Mr. Mayor and councilmen, just a quick comment on parking at Red Baron and a follow-up to what the mayor stated. I do believe we are nearing the close of the construction fund. We do have to have some further discussions with the, with the architect, which we hope to schedule soon, and my understanding for the funding as well is that there, there may be some funds there, and I suspect that if we wished to do that and directed Glenn Olson and his staff to, to work on a plan or design for that, I think that they would be willing to take that on even this year. I know you've got a lot going on, but I think that should be a discussion that we bring up soon. And then just to follow up as well to the town halls, and received some follow-up emails encouraging in them to occur, and I know there's been a couple different discussions on them. One, you know, how will we follow up to some of the questions asked? And then secondly, are we going to have them more than once a year? One of the things that I stated to a number of councilmen is I think we should respond to the items or issues that were brought up collectively, meaning maybe we can issue an issue statement or paper and give background and then try to answer these different topics that were brought up. And then obviously, if they're site-specific for an intersection of particular property, we can take a look at those immediately, and I know that Glenn and his staff have done some of that already. But I do think we want to follow up on what was discussed so that what was stated does, you know, they get a feeling that it's, we're not just listening, but we're trying to respond as well, even though I know you did a lot of response during the meetings. And then, as far as recurrence, one of the things that, you know, I'm going to do tomorrow with Alex Peterson, is we're going to meet and talk about how we can communicate with residents of City of Marshall. And if you talk to younger residents who have families, they're not going to come to a meeting, because it would mean that they'd have to find a place for their children and so forth, so for them, you know, doing something remotely, participating or communicating remotely is advantageous for them, and I think we kind of want to look at those types of communication strategies. And the other thing, too, is we want to be inclusive of our population, minorities, college students, different age sectors that's, that makes up the City of Marshall, and those are some of the things we're going to talk about tomorrow, is what are some other communication strategies that we can do? One of the things I'll point out is when the chamber recently did a survey on what Marshall needs, you know, that on Facebook got 10,000 views and over 700 responses, so, you know, the town hall is just one venue for communication, and I think we need to look at doing multiple types of communication so that we can ensure we're inclusive of the whole community. So I just wanted to add that as well, but obviously, really good feedback on the town halls and a good suggestion by the council. And Kathy Lee did take notes along with Dennis, and that was helpful, and we will look at them together as a staff and review them with council on response.
Thank you, Sharon. Glenn?
A couple of items, if we could bring up, we had some questions at the town hall meeting concerning the Tree Street area signage, and if you remember, this is something that we addressed in September of 2017. And if you look closely at the method that was used for, for installation of stop signs along the route, you can see consistency of stop signs along Bruce for these residential areas coming onto it, and stop signs all along these two major routes as well. Internally, there's like two blocks, so this one's along two blocks, all these are about two blocks each without stop signs. Now, since this action, there was some discussion about five crashes at one of the intersections, and I was hoping that the police chief was going to be here tonight, but I will be following up on any crash locations that may adjust this recommendation for traffic control. We want to make sure that we're not installing stop signs for traffic impairment. Every, every stop sign does take gas, every stop sign does take time, but safety is probably the most important thing in the discussion of traffic control. But this is what was reviewed and what was installed. The red ones are new stop signs that were installed, this yield sign was replaced with a stop sign, and you can see kind of the theory here of traffic control along the major routes of the area. So that would be certainly something I'd want to check in with the police department as far as locations of significant crashes. Now.
Just interrupt here. Jim or Craig, can you point out, or the intersection pointers right there, the intersection that was of concern that came up?
Right there.
Okay, so that would be the specific.
Minnesota and Birch.
Okay, so we won't discuss that intersection, just to see what the safety issues might be there. Now, we also address with the property owners at times the issues of speeding, and what we try to do there is for reports of speeding, there's typically a couple of things that can be monitored fairly closely. Number one, in a residential subdivision like this, it's normally the same person speeding at the same time of the day, and I'm not saying exactly the same time, but there's a, there's a timeframe there. Also, we ask for, if you can get a license number, please do that. If you can get a description of the vehicle, try to get that so that the police department can come out there at a certain time of day. If they're not working on something, I'll say more significant, but, you know, not that, not that this wouldn't be more as significant as others, but they don't, they don't have a lot of personnel on staff for this. But is it in the morning? Is it when school lets out? Is it that certain time of the day with the same vehicle all the time speeding down that street? Because that's not an area that normally I would drive in, in a regular basis. It's, it's probably a, I'll call it a little-used street compared with other traffic counts. However, there might be some issues there, like if there are crashes, it might be visibility, it might be trees in the way, it might be just as simple as speeding. So I, I will touch base with Chief. So, I, I will touch base with Chief Yount on any, any crashes. Not that they have to be fatalities, they don't have to be that, but it's, I think we presented kind of the, the conditions for stop sign installation, primary versus secondary routes, heavily-used routes, and that's what was used to put this together back in September of 17. But we will review it.
And I think on the corner of Minnesota and Birch is, it's people using, it's actually up two blocks. It's people.
Up here?
Other way. They're bypassing the light to get to the college.
And so, that might be a faster speed. If you're bypassing a light, you better be getting there in a hurry.
Bypassing the left turn, there only gets to the college.
Yeah, to bypass a light.
And that was really the, the concern was, is that if that becomes the, the two route in the morning to the college from that whole area up and beyond, and that was really the, the opinion that, I think there's a, they've observed the commonality in the vehicles, a consistency in the vehicles is the impression that I got, so I think you're on the right approach.
And we will discuss that with the chief, but it will be based upon other things going on in town.
Thank you.
But, but this is a good result of a town hall meeting, where we've looked at, and maybe they don't agree with the locations of them because of real specific instances at locations that we can address.
Okay, thank you, Glenn.
And maybe one more comment, I was out to the home show as well. My goodness, those stripes are close together. I, I think any vehicle like your guys', you'd have to center your vehicle on the stripe is probably the best way to park, right?
But they're still the same distance from stripe to stripe, so you have to literally take a stall and a half.
Or two.
Or two stalls, right, but that'll get you keyed in most lots.
And so, when we, when we do that, redo it, when we seal coat that area, we will restripe it to wider. We tried to maximize the number of spaces, and yeah, you can maximize the spaces, but it's not always the best way to do it, and I think they need to be bigger.
We noticed a lot of what I would call squish parking, where guys tried to get passenger door to passenger door, and then, because it's couples, and then the husband would back up and let the wife in. You know, and that's what I watched. I watched that four times, we were out there both Saturday and Sunday, and I watched that four times.
Both for dropping off and picking up. One person would get in, so.
My wife instructed me on how to do that.
Okay, but, but we agree to that.
And there may be, might be a short-term solution there that we can do even on the adjacent property.
Yeah, see, we did change the width on the other property by the ball diamonds.
That's a lot nicer.
Yeah.
Dennis?
Nothing else, Your Honor, you pretty much hit every.
Okay. We'll then move then to Agenda Item Number 17, the information, or the pending agenda items. Agenda Item Number 18, the information items, including building permits. Agenda Item Number 19, the upcoming meetings. Comments on any of those? Agenda Item Number 20 is to consider adjourning this meeting.
I move we adjourn.
Motion by Jim, seconded by David. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I have, I just would like to take one minute to say one more thing tonight. I got a complaint from a person who was frustrated, they're a city employee who does road maintenance, and one of the frustrations, and it needs to be enforced, I wish Chief Yount was here, but they're frustrated because apparently, a lot of contractors are dumping the snow from their hires into the roadway, which is causing a lot of issues, especially when you have that really heavy snow. I saw it myself on my road, somebody came in and they had a plow, and they were trying to plow the street, and he got stuck. And so then, there's a big wad of snow in the middle of the road, which has already got enough, well, that's ultimately going to end up in somebody's driveway, so we need to be more fastidious about enforcing sidewalks and plowing into the roadways and things like that.
We had several conditions like that that was temporarily moved, and we were keeping an eye on those. Two of them were on Saratoga Street on each side of, of College Drive, and we were going to contact them, and by the next day, the contractor come back and picked it up. So I was just wanting to make sure that, that our crew wasn't picking up those piles for the, the private party. But we did have several of those on this time's removal. And there again, you know, it was a really, really heavy condition, but we'll contact the, the contractors to make sure that they don't do that. Another question we brought up, that was brought up, is if you know where we're hauling our snow to, it's in the southern non-developed area of Car Sub 1. That whole street along Highway 23 is being used for snow dump site. The reason for that is because all of our snow dump sites are soft, and we tear them up completely, so we're using the roadway. We did have some contractors utilizing the same dump site. And, you know, where else are you going to dump and not tear it all up? So, those are the kinds of things where if you have any strong feelings about any of those kind of items, let us know, because we're kind of softer on those items with a 10-inch snow than we would be on a 2-inch snow.
So that road's going to be marked as closed?
What's that? Yeah, the street? Yes.
And I'll comment on this, so somebody who pushes snow, when you have 12 or 11 inches of heavy, wet snow, it's a lot of work for everybody to move it. And I understand not to dump it in the roadway, sometimes it just falls off, yes, it does just fall off of a bucket. It's just, it's a lot of work, it's hard on your equipment. So, we gotta remember, as a private sector works in this, if the private sector can't get the town open, the businesses aren't open, so it's a group effort, and I understand people dumping isn't right, but this is, it's a mammoth job to move 11 inches of heavy, wet snow.
Okay, the motion on the table is to adjourn, is there any other discussion on that motion? If not, we'll move to a vote.
Better not be any red on this.
Motion passes, we're adjourned.